Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting at the most 45 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to five questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or that they would like to add clarification to, at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Dick Quintle, one of the six candidates for two seats for the Plymouth Select Board in the Plymouth Town election. Dick, thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
Alrighty, I'm gonna go right into the questions.
Okay.
Alright. The first one is about capital expenses and budgeting. Every year, budgets are prepared, debated, recalculated, and finally presented to town meeting for approval. Salaries and benefits, town-owned buildings, and ongoing capital expenditures are often debated, and there are always projects or initiatives that do not get funded each year. The Select Board is required to review the annual and capital budgets. What parameters do you use in determining which budgetary items you will support and which you will not?
Okay, well, we are handed down a list in an exact order from the Capital Outlay Committee, which it goes to them, and they recommend to the Select Board and the FinCom. I overlooked the list, and we, you know, picked the ones we think, if we think they're rated fairly, from say, A to Z, whatever it might be, all numeral. And to give you an example, I think it was two years ago, I got a call from the Superintendent's Office asking me to go there and look at Nathaniel Morton, needed some roof, well, needed a roof, needed a lot of stuff. And he said, will you come down and take a look? So I did, and I went back to the board, and I actually zoomed in on the insurance, not the insurance, not, um, capital outlay.
Yep.
Excuse me. And spoke in favor of putting this project before one of ours, meaning the town side.
Okay.
Because I thought it was very important that the roof was leaking, and there was a little mold, and all those bad things that go with it can be very costly. So I actually spoke in favor, and that's how I prioritize. However, we hear about the town hall and the meals tax, and how it's tied to town hall as it exists today, and I don't know the exact year that it's paid off, but there's been chatter over our 10-year outlook plan, strategic plan for the future, as to, you know, the meals tax should go into that, and I voted against that. And the reason I did, the biggest reason I did, was because I didn't want to dedicate that certain source for anything, but I think as a community or a town, that we need to commute, um, commit so much of that meal tax money for our maintenance of our buildings. When I say town, the whole town, schools, and I was in Cold Spring School, I think it was Tuesday or Monday, and I noticed that all brand-new windows, and I'm sitting there looking, saying, why don't the town buildings? Because we never really go for it and get it done right. So we're trying to mirror that. It's been my wish, and some other board members, that we actually combine, have a town Plymouth maintenance department, rather town versus the school side and the whole process, and just let it be, take it right off the top before you go to town meeting. But I mean, you know, we, and I voted against, we have a director for, uh, we'll call it maintenance right now in Plymouth, but we really don't have any employees under that umbrella. So I was, I was voted against that for two reasons. One, for the one I just, you know, explained to you, we might have two, one and a half, but not a department head-oriented department. And we need to have a way to fund that, and I think that's the problem, or that's the problem I had with it.
So you wanted to use some of the meals tax?
Absolutely.
Which currently is completely dedicated to paying the town hall debt?
Yes.
Okay. So you wanted to take a portion of that and put it into a fund that would help to maintain all of the town's budgets?
Right, I'm looking in the future.
Okay.
Right.
And that was voted down?
Uh, no, we haven't got to that part. We're still debating that, that 10-year outlook, but I see, when they see that strategic plan in maintenance, just for the town buildings.
Right.
I don't know what the schools is, but it's astronomical.
Okay, yeah. So that's one of your priorities in budgeting?
Absolutely. The town's, it should be a town priority, but it is mine too, if you want to say that.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine.
Yes, I'm recommending that.
Yeah, it is. Are there, there's, there's talk, you talked about the schools, there's a lot of talk about how the school's budget is kind of set by the schools.
Yes.
And it's a big part of the town's budget.
Yes, it is.
Now, one of the things you just suggested would be able to take some of the maintenance that both the county and the school have, combine it, which, which I would think probably would make some sense in some way. What other aspects of having two really separate processes for large budgets? Do you see that as being a benefit or an issue, a problem, and how would you change it, or can you even change it?
Well, that's the thing, it has to be mutually agreed upon, and we brought it up, and we don't get a lot of response, and I think that's a little unfair, if I, if I may, on at least the maintenance department for the town of Plymouth, because they're experienced in that, and you hear, you know, little, little qualms, and you know, we hear in like, well, who would give the orders, the marching orders, and who would? You know what? If that's the issue, then let it be a freestanding department. You have a maintenance director and an assistant, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
If you do it right, a town this size? And they, they just run off, and it takes the going to town meeting, and well, this is my money, this is yours. That's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about our money.
I'm talking about, why don't I have new windows in Memorial Hall? Why don't I have them in, why do other buildings, you know, falling apart? And, you know, it's just the way it is, the fire stations, you see what that costs to fix. And next is gonna be police and DPW, those buildings all have to be done.
Right. Now, aside from all those capital projects that you know are gonna be on the list very soon, what do you do for the things that happen that came out of the blue?
Here we go.
Here we go. Like, what, how do you, how do you handle that budgetarily, because you have to?
And you know what? You do the best you can. Anybody that's sitting there is gonna do the best they can with that.
What are your options?
To cut. It's, it's really-
But if the budget's already been done, and something happens-
You still, you still can adjust the budget. It might mean a layoffs, um, or whatever, but you know, it's had to be done. I don't know what year it was, but we had to take $5 million, I believe it was, out of our operating budget halfway through the year.
Was that the sewage?
Yeah, no, that was when, um, no, that was, I wasn't there for that.
Okay, we're through that.
I'm here for this one, though, but to get back to where we were, five million, Pam Nolan was the town manager.
Okay.
I remember that, and we had to cut $5 million. So we, you know, early retirement incentives, all kinds of stuff, so those are the tough decisions.
So you gotta make the numbers work.
And you know, I'm very concerned, talking about the budget going into, you know, a year and a half from now, a year from now, you know, the tide's gonna hit the pavement. Nobody's talking about that.
On what?
And I keep saying, oh, what's that? Oh, no, getting very close to our tax levy with the, you know, decrease in taxes from the power plant, Holtec, it's gonna be a big deal to the community, you know, and-
How do you-
But, yes, Pam.
How do you plan or prep for that?
Well, you know, the town's known about it for years. We also have a mitigation fund and all that, and there's different talk about what should be done. You know, there's 1,500 acres there, there's another subject for you. And the thing with the zoning, that's the Osmond, that's in the Pine Hills right now, they pretty much abut the Pine Hills. So Pine Hills, if they wanted to, I'm not saying they're going to it, but they actually could bring their zoning right into that, you know. Have I asked them? Of course I did. I mean, I've asked them on the side, and I got the answer, no. But nobody's gonna know what's gonna happen with that. Some people want to develop it. I'd be all right with putting all 1,500 acres in conservation, as long as the town had somewhere in town where it added a light industrial park.
Okay.
Because right now, we're very short on that.
Okay. Lots to talk about.
Okay.
Lots down the road. Okay, number two, infrastructure, speaking of. The town of Plymouth is massive in area. Infrastructure integrity is a complicated subject and includes the sourcing and delivery of water, the collection and transportation of sewage, the upkeep of roads and bridges, just to name a few. What do you think are Plymouth's greatest challenges with its current infrastructure?
A lot of, a lot of, a huge challenge, actually, and that's what we, I've been facing since I've been back on the board this round, is the infrastructure and trying to move water. Even before my time on the board, there was issues with moving water, like to North Plymouth and West Plymouth, now is West Plymouth, and South Plymouth could also possibly have an issue very soon. But I hear the town's working on that, and that one's gonna be resolved. You hear a lot about West Plymouth, we had a mental hospital that wanted to come to town, I think it was 245 beds. They pulled up stakes after investing, I think, a little over a million dollars. They just couldn't wait and get answers on the, uh, the water hookups, and I mean, that would, that was really, that was too bad. It was in the industrial park, I'd say North Plymouth, West Plymouth, North Plymouth, Cherry Street.
Okay.
So it was well within the zone, and you see all the, all the housing there, but you don't, you know, it just doesn't, doesn't add up. And these are the type of things, another one is a cemetery. Um, I was getting calls two years ago for, you know, Dick, yeah, we're really getting concerned, we're getting full at it, so I asked some questions.
Yeah.
At a meeting, we had JB come in and explain to us that, yes, him and then Ken King, um, there are gonna be issues very soon, but-
So you're running out of space in the cemetery?
Absolutely. We have enough a little bit, and-
Yeah.
We put together a committee, and I want to speed it up, and that's the other thing with town stuff, it takes so long to get something to A to Z, you know, but it's just a process, it's, it's too long and too slow, and when I'm at meetings, it's not to come on the department heads, but it's like, you know, let's turn the heat up a little. And I get it, because I'm overseeing that.
Yeah.
I'm actually sit on the committee. So they got some new ideas, one of Mr. King's, when he was there, he was the superintendent, he's talking about taking some of the roads up and, you know, making extra rows for the cemetery.
Right.
And I said, well, that's good.
So you don't have as many roads through the cemetery?
Except for if you are people that are on the, on the first row, now, now you're not gonna be. I mean, so that's gonna create some issues. We call them double deeps, you know?
Yep, yep.
Uh, one on top of the other, I guess it is, I call them double deep, that's probably not the proper term, but-
Well, a lot of cemeteries are doing that now.
And natural burials is another one. So we've looked at all those things, we're gonna be implementing that. I believe we're gonna be looking at, well, I was told we're gonna be moving forward with a Route 80 site. Now, I seem to think there might be some issues there, but maybe there's not-
So that would be a new cemetery?
That's gonna be the start, and I asked, and they said, when JB was here, it was gonna be the spring, because I keep asking and questioning, because if they tell me spring, I always give them a little-
Yeah.
-six months to a year after that, because, you know, it just takes long, they come across problems and-
Sure, sure. And anyone who doesn't know, JB was Jonathan Beeter, who used to be-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay, Director of Public Works.
And he, and under him was Ken King, who ran the actual cemetery, who was also retired.
No, I've, I've never heard, no one's ever brought this up before in any of the interviews I've done. Do you have a right as a citizen who lives in Plymouth to have a plot in Plymouth?
Well, yes, absolutely.
You do, okay.
And I'm gonna answer that two-pronged, if I may. First off, there's, and there's a moratorium unless you actually pass, which I have an issue with, you know, I feel like I've lived here all my life, most of my life.
Yeah.
And if I want to, you know, I should be able to go buy one, I'm not saying I should be able to go buy 10.
Right.
But you know what, and why limit it to two? I mean, a lot of us have children.
Yep.
Or you always, you know, I don't know, families always have an extra one.
Yeah, family plots, yeah, they're very common.
So, I mean, that's on hold, some moratorium on that, which, just because of the timeline, I keep saying, you know, I want to make a motion and remove that.
Yeah.
Because that'll get them moving again.
Okay.
But, and then to answer your, your question, really in truth, there's a state statute, state law, that each community is responsible to bury their own. So I, you know, I actually read it to them one night, that's how I, I know about this, because I did some homework on it at the time. And naturally, I didn't know you were gonna ask me about it today, which is fine.
Well, I didn't, you brought it up.
It is, no, alright, yeah, it is state law.
Okay.
And it is mandated by the state.
Oh, that's interesting.
So it's a mass general law.
Okay, I didn't know that. And we have so many residents in Plymouth that you'd have to have a lot of spaces available.
And you know what, not being sarcastic, it's an older population, the majority now.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's only gonna, you know-
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's very realistic.
But when you, when you sit as a select board member and all that, and you, you hear things, or you come across things like this, and you say, I don't get it, and then the people get really frustrated, and they have a right to be.
Sure.
Their taxes are, you know, they are what they are, they're expensive.
Yeah.
And I just don't believe that, you know. We shouldn't have all these issues, I mean, that one should have been planned, I don't, I don't understand it, so. I guess it's a priority, so what was the town manager?
Okay. All right, question number three is about the new proposed charter. After many months of meetings, input, and analysis, a duly-elected group of charter commission members finalized their suggested changes to the town of Plymouth's existing charter. Whether or not to adopt this new charter will be on the ballot on May 20th. Will you be voting yes or no on the adoption of this charter, and why?
No.
You'll be voting no? Okay, and why?
Well, from what I saw of it, and I didn't see every meeting, but I can also tell you, I believe it started when I was the chairman, it's my second year, it was a COVID year, and when I say that, we were doing, still doing things remotely. And I felt it odd that nobody actually asked me to go, you know, think, like you're asking me questions today, that nobody actually offered up to, you know, to come in and talk and, and to see. I know they did other ones, actually, I think Mr. Mahoney was in there, and at the time, I don't believe he was a selectman, which is fine, but I mean, I would think that sitting on that, you would at least ask the present board, FinCom or whoever, but for me, I never had an invitation of that. I saw what was on there, and I see the precinct chairs, if you will, not all of them, there's a, there's a group-
The committee of precinct chairs?
Yeah.
Yep.
And a lot of the powers that were select board, or the people, or town meetings, they combined to give themselves controls of all kinds of things. Some of that is all right, but I mean, the town moderator and stuff, that should be elected. Why, why should it be the town meeting that decides who the moderator is? I mean, I think Steve-
You're referring to the fact that currently, it's an election, the people vote for the town moderator in the new proposed charter?
Right.
It's the town meeting members who actually are voted in by residents, but that group would be the ones who would, who would appoint the new moderator?
And with due respect, when we say town meeting members put in by, they elected, yes, but they're elected in their precinct, that's not a town-wide vote. I mean, you're probably, I mean, I'm sure there's town meeting members with 10 votes, I mean, you're talking 2,000, 3,000 votes to, when it's across town, represent the whole community.
Okay, okay.
You know, and for some of the reasons, whether it been the prior town manager, Mrs. Oregi, or what they've seen happen, and what they're assuming, that's all the reasons. So some of these things that they actually worked on were because of this or a result of this. And I've even heard them say them. However, you know, now's my time to speak, and I will.
Yes, yes.
Some things you, you can't speak about, some things you can.
Right.
And I'm bound by mass general laws, but you know, it is what it is. And a lot of decisions and changes were made for the wrong reasons. I, giving an example, I reached out to the chairman of the precinct chairs, if you will, and I asked her on several occasions, I reached out to her and explained something that she might, you know, I might have heard, or-
Yep.
I wanted to be open.
Yep.
Clear. I wanted her to bring it back to them. I offered to go sit with her when I was the chairman, and it was in COVID time. Said, I'd gladly come in and answer any questions you might have, never return call, so. I even called the vice chairman one time on an issue, but I mean, it's just that, there's no real communication, there's a, there's a breakdown. I'm not saying be in control, I've worked with town meeting all my prior years, I don't know if it's 10, 12, whatever it is, and never had an issue, and I always let it do its thing. But when I see things, I have to, you know, I'm the guy that says it like I see it, you know, and this is what I see.
Okay. Is there anything in this new proposed charter that you think is, is a good change, a good addition, a good add-on to what we currently have?
It, it probably is, I mean, but when it comes down to me and the charter, I'm gonna be frank again. I would like to see the question put on the ballot, if the people in this community want a mayoral formal government, or want to stay with town meeting formal government, and then they start trying to fix it with counselors and, you know, whatever. I, I still would like to, to see that question, and I brought that up, because we had a big thing going on with the horse race, people would put a proposal for the community, and everybody was jumping off a bridge, and I wanted to put that question on there then. I said, let's put another question on, and they were like, no! And for the efficiency of the town, I don't know, but some things I see that don't benefit the town.
Okay.
And, you know, some of them don't get all their homework done, but the majority do, the people that I talk with. Like I say, I don't really interact that way, I let it go to town meeting, and I let them decide.
Okay. So you just brought up the horse racing thing, just for anyone who doesn't know what that was, because that was probably about a year ago? Because there's voters that are probably gonna watch these that hopefully are, that we have more voters that are getting more involved this time, to pay attention. So can you just explain what that was very quickly?
We, we had a proposal from Boston South, and it was, you know, without looking at it, it was an entertainment facility, horse racing, entertainment, and I think it was a concert venue or a sports venue.
Okay.
There were possibilities.
And it was gonna be where?
On the 100-acre lot that the county owns, but I believe it's leased to them now, but-
Okay.
So they, you know, rang on the bell and said, you know, we'd like you to look at this, and I looked at it, and there were other people there, and I'm not gonna bring people into it right now.
Sure, sure.
I know who was there.
Yeah.
And it wasn't a secret. We, I set it up so we could bring it to town hall, let all the department heads, the town manager, the assistant, want to get their input, what do you think about this? And I, you know, is it me, or, you know? So we did that, and then the press wanted to come, and it's not that I didn't want the press to come, I didn't have it a secret, I announced it at town meeting. So the people would say, I wasn't transparent, I mean, a lot of things come to the town, and even in like, when they're building or going for permitting, like I just told you, the mental hospital, a lot of people don't put it out there because it stirs the pot or the wrong information gets out there first, and-
Yeah.
Then it's poorly presented, and it just, it just keeps snowballing. But when you're an elected official, regardless of what the proposal is, it's your responsibility to put it for the town, it's a proposal.
Sure, sure.
All right, so we did it, the people were up and arms, it didn't get vented properly, but they wanted to put it on the ballot, and we did. And it wasn't, so we voted against it. I think it was Chairman Kovac, actually sent a letter in after our vote, sent two, maybe. But, so that's quite obvious where it was.
Yeah.
And that's the thing, I think we need to have the same clarity and transparency, whether it should be a mayor formal government, or it should be the town meeting, but everybody fights that, and the other thing, going back to the charter, is it's the same people pretty much all the time, you know, looking at this document, and it costs a lot of money to do this, this isn't a cheap one. And I think they really need to do us justice by asking the simple questions, and I've yet to see, I'm curious myself, and I know it's been done in the past, because I've been on both sides of the fence, depending on what the actual charter was.
Yeah.
But I think the majority of the people in town now are gonna look for a change. Every time I see a complaint, or, and I'm not saying I write them down, but I look at like, I need a mayor for, which isn't the answer to a lot of the problems, but-
So just to piggyback on that, that thing you said, that, you know, they came to you, just using this as an example?
Yep.
That the Boston South people came to you as, as the chair of the Select Board? And are there, are there situations where something is brought to you as the chair of the Select Board, and it's confidential, or it's not ready yet for, for public release? I mean, is, is, that must be something that the Select Board as a whole deals with that?
Because this, I'm really glad you asked me this question. You're absolutely right, and that's where the transparency word comes in, so now that you say that, let me see if I can say this right. I was at a town event.
Yeah.
And it was on a Saturday, and somebody, a town employee walked up to me and gave me a formal complaint. I took the complaint, I opened it, I read it, and I said, I just want you to know, I'm making an acknowledgement of what you just gave me, I read it, I'm gonna, it's okay that I have to keep this, and they said, yes, when I say they, because I don't want to say you, she.
No, no, that's fine, yeah.
They said, absolutely, and I said, you realize that I'm gonna call town council on Monday, and we're gonna talk about this, and we're gonna have to have an executive session.
Right.
And then you'll talk to the town's attorneys, we'll notify the other person that's sending the complaints, blah, blah, blah. And so that's how like, that situation started. Now, then you got people out there, hey, I don't know, you know what, you can't, I'm going by the laws that are set up.
Well, I think that was just, I just wanted to clarify that there are, I just used that as an example.
No, but there's a perfect example.
There are many things that come before the Select Board that have to have more vetting before it can be released to the general public, right?
Well, absolutely, it was in the beginning.
Yeah, okay.
You know what, now that, we'll go back to the horse track, if you will, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm not trying to confuse anybody, but when we, when I actually called to have the department heads, because I wanted to see, I didn't know nothing about this, I don't. You know, what I do for work is completely, there's a lot goes into this, public safety, your resources, everything, the property, I never even seen the property. And it's just ideas, until you actually see somebody pull a permit.
Right.
That's a whole living ballgame.
Sure, sure.
So in the process of doing this, we're talking about this at our meeting, and then what happened was the press ran out there, because they wouldn't leave it alone, they had to know right that day. And it just was a matter of the way our government set up, that we do the department is, that's the way I felt it should have been, and then open it up to the public, and let's, let's hear it. But it's not like the board is gonna take, any board is gonna take an application and grant it, I mean, you gotta go through the things, just like everybody else does.
Let's go through the process, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So what, what I'm saying is, we heard what they said about the horse racing, but on the other hand, Boston South still is in agreement with the county.
Right.
And that's not the town's land.
No, that's the county's land.
Now, why do I think that that's a good place for a light industrial? Because it abuts one. A sewer plant is there, a sewer plant is under capacity, this would give them open up, would relieve-
So you're going right into my next question.
They're gonna, you know, relieve rates for the ratepayers, I mean, I'm doing my job as the way I should be looking at it.
Okay, so that is a good segue into the next question, which is about economic development and tourism, actually, I put them together. And obviously, tourism and economic development are crucial aspects of Plymouth's current[1606.70] And obviously, tourism and economic development are crucial aspects of Plymouth's current and future financial health. But they're very different, BMOs, both of them. What priorities do you place on the areas on each of these? And what are the drawbacks that concern you for either economic development or tourism?
The drawback I see, and it's the frustrating part, is the process. It's a little long. It could be a little better. I'm not saying stamp everything.
The process for?
Going through the permitting process, you go for the zoning board, then they say, no, the zoning board would actually be last. Planning board. Then you, you got your architect, your lawyer, your, your engineers, you know?
And this is for any, any project, anything you wanna build.
And, and I understand it. And you'll go to the meeting, and they'll say to you, you know, come back, we don't like this, change that. And that's their job. I get it. But I, I said years ago, and I think it's catching now, that the department head, whether it be planning board or the chairman, the select board, planning board, zoning board of appeals, the building commissioner and public safety should have a meeting once a, once a month. Say, look, this is coming down, or it's like the track or anything. We have this proposal. What do you, what do you people think? It's gonna go here?
Yeah.
What's the pros and cons?
Yep.
Then you have that conversation, you have a set of plans, or usually they have a preliminary set. And they look at it, and you, and you send it back to them. So now they're gonna come for the boards, or at least start the process, and they know some of the problems.
Right.
And it's just very expensive. It, it just come back, come back, come back.
So you're saying it's expensive for the person who wants to build?
Yeah, it's, you know, and I'm not saying rub a stamp everything.
Right.
But I mean, I mean.
It's a cumbersome process.
To say you can't have a bank in, in the, where a market basket is, I mean, seriously?
So one of the problems with economic development is the town's own inability to do it quickly?
And I will say, the new building inspector, Nick Mayo, um, is changing it up. Um, he's got it so you can do online inspections, and you can pay, it's, it's great. My son-in-law was a local electrician. Now he's working for the grid. But he said, Dad, he said, why can't you go online and get a permit like you could during COVID? I said, you know what? That's a very good idea. If you could, so I said it at a meeting. I said, you know, a lot, and I met a, an inspector for a friend that was waiting for one of his condos here in Plymouth, long story short. They had to wait till they showed up, but why couldn't that just take a picture? A lot of the things you can and a lot of the things you can't.
Okay, so the, so the inefficiency is one of the things that bothers you.
Right, they're bringing it up. And you know what? I give him credit. He's doing a great job with that.
Okay.
To get on economic development, if you were to say to me, and I said this Monday, or whatever day it was, you know, we're gonna develop that 100 acres that abuts an industrial park, right, industrial. Um, I'd be all, all in for putting the other 1,500 acres, which I'm talking about at Holtek, in total conservation. I think that would be great.
Okay. And what types of, of industry do you think would be best to be brought to Plymouth?
You know, the, the, the mental hospital would have been for a number of reasons, not just jobs and the tax rate, but it's something we need. You know, every community is screaming, um, for, you know, behavioral problem.
Sure.
And, um, you know, we're lucky right now in Plymouth that we, you know, everything's been pretty coprosthetic. But, you know, I always have in the back of my head, you know, I think there should be metal detectors in every school. I've said it in public, and I'm gonna say it again on this campaign trail. There should be, regardless. I'd rather be proactive than reactive, especially in something like that.
Sure. Uh, let me ask you about the, the potential convention center that's being talked about possibly being brought to Plymouth or the Plymouth area. What is your thoughts about, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, the last I heard of it, and that may be a couple of months ago, maybe a month ago, um, was that I believe it was the 1620 that was actually doing it. But I think the foundation's also doing a study, so I sit, you know, I listen to both. And I believe the area they're not pushing for, but it's the waterfront. All things are pointing to Water Street. And even though you might be able to put one there, I worry about the traffic and the tourism, and I know you had asked me about that. You know, we do have a good tourism thing in Plymouth, but I often ask myself, is that a, just a good idea having the one horse in the race? I know in my own business, I diversified after two or three things, and I would love for this town to, to have a second. And if that's the convention center, I guess it just depends on if it's publicly funded. We have some say really where it goes. Um, but if, if it's not, and it's, it's public, I mean, private, then we're really not going to.
Right.
Which brings me into Water Street, we have to watch for tourism.
Right.
One of the reasons I ran. But you've got the corner of the, um, I call it the marina. In which, and CPC's trying to save the facade of that building for the look. And I totally agree and support that 100%. And I understand there might be some zone initials. Well, that's now when we have to stand up and say, look, we're okay with this if we are, because this is what we're trying to do, and we're trying to keep that look. I mean, either it's historical or it's not. You can't be building condos on every corner and say, this is America's hometown. Well, this is where the pilgrims landed. I mean, it's ridiculous.
All right.
So we need to have two things. And then the other thing, now just touch on it, is the Bennys parcels for sale. What happens on that lot is gonna be huge. And everybody says they don't want condos and everything, so I'm just throwing it out there that maybe we should all get together and buy that piece of land. And you know, if the building needs too much work, and everybody says it isn't worth 10 million or what, the 9 million that they're asking, it will be someday. And that is the entrance to our waterfront that could be parking. That has unbelievable potential. But in the wrong hands, when I say wrong, I don't mean wrong hands.
No, I know.
But in a developer's hands, there you go.
Yeah, and, and so obviously, there's, there's a lot of talk about development that's housing people versus development that's housing businesses.
Right.
Because the people will obviously take more goods and services that.
And we, and we need housing.
Of course we do.
We need it more affordable. No, no, exactly. I said, and people like Cottage Park, that's where I live, that's not affordable housing in there, okay?
Okay, the last thing on tourism is the, um, the potential of having the smaller cruise line come in to the, to the harbor. What do you think of that?
I liked the idea until I heard about the lobster man. And the real thing is, I have two mariners. I'm gonna call it straight. I told you that I say it like I see it.
Yep.
I, I called my, my cousin who's a mariner, has been since he was 17 years old.
Okay.
And then I called my son, who's another avid fisherman. And I said, what do you think about this boat? He says, Dad, I'm gonna tell you. He said, when that boat's coming in that channel, if the wind's blowing a little bit, and that thing starts to turn, there's no room for that to turn, and it's gonna be a problem. Okay, so I'm not gonna say it's gonna tip over. But so I asked myself, well, what does it mean in my eyes? It means that no in and no out of a harbor for a lot of people. People that got trips, people that doing whatever they're doing. Then I said to myself, okay, now what if you need, what if we have an emergency? Who is that? Harbor Master gonna be able to handle it? I know Chad's very good at what he does. But I mean logically, there's hundreds of people. And, um, I say, hmm, I don't know. So if it gets stuck there, you're not turning the boat around. So I don't know what you do. And the coast guard, well, I guess we have to wait for the closest ship. I just not 100% sold on it. And I know the town manager and some of the other board members might be extremely upset with me. But I'm not gonna put my hand up at the safety of any people, citizens, if you will, or tourists. Or the lobster men who were there, been there for years until them, two things are settled. Public safety being the bigger second lobster man.
I think people appreciate honesty, you know, that you, you tell it like, like you, you believe it.
That's exactly what I did with it. I mean, and I know the state worked awful hard and gave us millions of dollars for the harbor. And that's what I'm hearing. But those two, I have to be convinced of that. And I think they, they want it to be like that.
Okay. Um, let me ask you the fifth question, and it's about the broad field of candidates we have here. There's six individuals running for two, three-year terms, and you're the only incumbent that's, that's running. Each brings a different set of experiences and history. Given that one of the select board's general powers and duties is to adopt policy directives and guidelines, which of course you know, how do you balance your own viewpoints and biases to serve the greatest good of the entire town?
Well, my simple answer to that heavy question is I try to make my decisions on what's best for absolutely the town and not put my hand up and see which way the winds, you know, that's not, that's not me. And that's probably my biggest downfall. But I also say in the second breast, that if I learn new information, all my questions are answered. And, you know, I make the wrong decision sometime. I'm not perfect on, you know, and I know that. I have no problem saying I made a mistake. I have no problem saying I'm sorry I've done it. And, you know, I, I just go with the facts before me, which, you know, which is what it should be. I mean, you can sit there and say, you know, you have a vision for this and a vision for that, but it's not Dick Quintle's vision. It's the vision of the people and really what they want, you know, to a point.
Yep, yep.
I mean, do I have a vision? Yeah, I wanna save Water Street.
Yeah.
I wanna save, do the right thing for Holtek.
Yeah.
I, you know, and there's a lot of ways around, and I'm worried about the Bennys thing. Nobody's probably, you know, but those things I know. And you know who the first ones are gonna get blamed? No matter who's sitting there after May 20th. It's whoever's sitting there is gonna get blamed for the Bennys thing. But you can remember, I told you about that today.
You did, and it's on tape here, we, on film, okay. All right. In the last few minutes, um, I want you to just look at this camera, not me, and tell, tell the people out there why they should vote for you. And if there's anything that we didn't talk about, that you wanna just go on record as saying, use this time for that.
Thank you. Like Julie said, my name is Dick Quintle. I've lived here in Plymouth most of my life, was born here. And I was a selectman previously for approximately 12 years. Came back this, um, this last term for three years for actually the 2020 celebration. That's really why I wanted to do one more. I wanted to be there for the, the celebration of the 400 of the, of the town. Well, that all changed very quickly after the first year. And I was vice chair the first year of COVID. The second year of COVID, I was chairman, and the third year now, Mrs. Kovakow. But since I've been on this board, this three-year run, Plymouth is a growing, expanding community. And I'm very concerned about, let's say, Holtek, uh, light industrial area versus the housing and the condo market. And we need to change our zoning in a historical district if we're to save Water Street. I didn't touch on that earlier and when we were talking about it. But these are all things that have to be looked at. At first, I wasn't gonna run. And then I made, I had a few issues going with, with family, my mom and myself. And once I got a, a good go-ahead on that, I made a decision to stay, only because I'm concerned and there's some big issues coming that have to be addressed. And I think what I know will be able to help. However, do I have the answer to everything? No, I don't. I don't speak in King's English. I speak in my little, we'll call it Dicky Talk. But that's the way people around town know me. And if you don't know me and you wanna know me, give me a call. My cell's 508-328-3651. It's the same one for town hall, and you can always stop by. I just ask that you don't do it on a Friday when we're busy at rush hour. But if you're kind enough to call, uh, I'll gladly sit with any, any citizen. And, or I'll meet you at town hall, or whatever's you're comfortable with. I love the town. I love its people, and that's why I do it. There's, it's, there's no other reason.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Dick, for participating in this interview. We wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, packtv.org for replay times and online viewing options, including packtv's on-demand and streaming services, Pack TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the election on Saturday, May 20th. Thank you and good day.